Chuck, you know where you bid? Looks like you would have moved in the same direction because both of your names are Dustin.
Oh, I thought you meant because I look almost like that. I thought you meant because both of our hair looks like this.
Okay, uh, this cloud will call the meeting to an end. First order of business is the flag set.
I feel you did this through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Steve Buxford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Extra large.
Review and approve the minutes of September 4th.
So.
Second, a motion and a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor, that's everybody. Uh, members reports, we'll start with Lindsay.
So, with the dams, like I've been hearing things about Brookfield, like potentially being sold and the impact of those come out. I just wanted to kind of bring that to the forefront, make sure it's something I'm thinking about or looking at and understanding the impact of any of those things happen. Yeah. It's really fish. Supoing and swimming at the Zula.
Is that it?
Yes.
You're wrong.
Uh, just, I spoke to construction downtown, there's nothing we can do about that. I keep reiterating that. Uh, the parking lot project actually looks like it went pretty good. Best they probably could do. It's too much.
Is it done? They weren't there this morning.
The parking lots?
No, the construction on the.
Though. They're on night work.
Oh, okay, because I thought that was supposed to start like last week and it didn't, I was like, ah.
No, it did, thanks.
It was mixed, yeah, they had some.
Yeah.
Alright, that's nice, it was great getting to school, drop the kids out in ten minutes.
It wasn't a stunted. Uh, Chucky, anything?
On what repeat?
Okay, right on. I know how that is, right on. Man, the only thing I had was if we were following up on, uh, code and animal control. Uh, just complaints, I mean, right, these properties, I mean, it just.
Yeah, so we'll hit animal control in number eighteen.
Okay.
And we can hit, uh, code concern in other business.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
All right. And that's, that's it for me. So with, uh, to you for the town manager report.
All right, I'm gonna take some time right off the top and address Lindsay's concern with regards to the dams. I wasn't able to dig into that. Essentially from some level of response of Mr. Brookfield. So, uh, Brookfield is a hedge fund, generally speaking. They're not an energy company, they just tend to invest in energies. Uh, the White Pine Hydro, which is pretty much the kind of that getting a little bit of the under struggle, was invested in by this fund in twenty twelve. Those funds mature after ten years with a two-year cushion. So now we're faced with that. So necessarily the investment pool is calling for evaluation of their investment. Do they continue to invest or whatnot? So they list their holdings for sale. Um, there is a water quality permit that the state is not issuing to the Shawman Dam at Sappy. And so that has caused the price necessarily of White Pine Hydro to depreciate, uh, which doesn't fare well necessarily for our prospective investors. Um, so that means that it's a process that generally happens every ten to twelve years on assets through something like this, where option one is to sell the assets. Option two is to find an investor department. Option three is to say, no, it continues to be a good investment for them to hold. So, the result of that is expected in October when Brookfield will announce where they're going. They have listed the dams necessarily as for sale. Um, the White Pine Hydro and Black Bear Hydro, which is, I think, a little further than us, but don't hold to it. Uh, when they listed the Nature Conservancy, which is the large funder of Remove the Dam, was the highest offer for White Pine Hydro. There are four dams apart of an NDA and as a part of that, they have to work in order for the transaction to go through to demonstrate that they can satisfy Sappy's intake need or the deal is off. Initial reports suggest that there's no financially feasible economical way to pull the Shawman Dam and satisfy Sappy. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. It's still up in the air right now, but everything's sealed beyond that. Uh, that came from Brookfield and Senator Farron. Uh, the latter part came from, uh, Senator Farron. But, um, we're kind of in a holding pattern until October. They've committed to us that we will have some sort of a communication event in October. Um, but no real straight answers there. But it is a legitimate concern, that is the Sappy. Uh, if they can finally mediate that, then there's a potential, um, for other things to happen from upstream, which would negatively impact us. Uh, one of the things that was said was, don't sound the alarms, but be aware and be listening. So that's the status of the dams.
Do we know what type of investment would be necessary to keep those dams in place?
I don't, but I have an idea that we can afford it.
Yeah.
I would probably say.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you're talking.
Uh, so that's where we're at, I'll continue to keep a pulse on that. Brad understands that it's important to us and he'll continue to keep surprised as soon as he knows, uh, any additional information. Uh, town office will be closed on Wednesday the third, which is the date of your next regular meeting. That's the standard first Wednesday in October for staff to attend the municipal association's conference. Uh, I've been asked to serve on a committee for MMA. Uh, it's wonderful, it's all remote, but, um, it's to review unfunded mandates of the legislature's handing down as well as PFAS regulations. Uh, those are both close to us, PFAS in more than one way, the fact that we have wildlife restrictions, but we also have PFAS testing, PFAS processing. Uh, and then the unfunded mandate is something that just continues to trickle down to everybody. Um, and we're left holding the bag. So, uh, we're keeping an eye on that, the time commitment on that is relatively minimal, but the working groups are small, so it should be impactful. The sewer pump truck is up to bid, that is open until October the tenth. Millstream trunk or tree, we hit on that last meeting, that's October twenty-sixth. But we're collecting candy here at the office. Um, for folks that would like to donate towards that, we can also take cash and give that to PTG, um, if you'd like. Twenty twenty-five budgeting has kicked off, I sent the request out to the departments and committees, uh, with a timeline to get everything back to us early, early December. Um, and if you folks have priorities that you'd like to see, uh, considered in the budget early on, please share those. Uh, this is obviously in our best interest to get them into the discussion first. Um, waste management, uh, I was doing some cleaning and we have a flag collection box here, um, but it's not really a formal thing and it's largely just our flag. So I reached out to waste management, they are going to start collecting, uh, flags for proper disposal. So it's a small initiative, but I think it's meaningful. And so they're gonna have a collection point at their kiosk. Um, they're gonna start advertising that at the back gate and we'll include that in our next newsletter, but, um, I haven't said waste diversion or burn-in, but, um, it is a respectful process of disposal. So more to come there, but thank you Jeff at his group for the small steps to make that happen.
Is it on the Facebook page?
It's not yet, because we just got it finalized today.
Alright.
Yep. It will be done. Yep. Um, MMA and KB Carter are, uh, hosting an event October twenty-fourth at the jailhouse. I forwarded an email to the board. Um, but if any members of boards or committees or overly interested members of the public would like to attend, it's a discussion about strengthening local and state government collaboration. Um, so it should be productive, it's a meeting session, uh, free to attend. And the newsletter is underway in terms of, um, drafting and writing and all that other fun stuff. If you have anything here or publicly, uh, please send that to me by September thirtieth. We'll print based on priority of town interest and then space permitted. Uh, out to the airport, scoping meeting was, has been set, I think that's Monday. The next to discuss, uh, upgrading taxi make runway lighting that will convert over to LED with federal state funding. I have initial discussions, um, with efficiency made to see if we can do a custom package with them to help subsidize our local share. I'm not confident that it's going to go anywhere, but I figured it was worth a try. They're giving money away to everybody else or anything else, so why not try for runway lighting? The tax assessors are gonna be brightening early tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. That's standard cleanup largely from tax commitment, just a handful of supplementals in the basement. Play people were to seven, October tenth, nothing on the horizon for them. The, everything for the Mercer Road property, uh, went approved, that was the day after our last meeting, so went without issue. Tiff Committee will meet next Tuesday at five, they have a handful of things in their agenda. Um, until their recommendations will come back to you at our next regular meeting. Uh, the first drawdown request of our CDS, our federal money for, uh, roadways, uh, was submitted, that's one ninety-seven, six hundred. That's a progress payment on San Diego River Road. That was submitted and I just got the alert this morning, uh, that that was approved and we should expect to see that money in a ton. Uh, your real estate collections and personal property collections versus previous year, we're in a pretty good situation here. Um, personal property has driven down New Balance, paid their personal property. Um, that's always, they have to hold until postmark, so we'll, you can see that, uh, on the next meeting. Uh, library trustees have meeting on next Thursday. The tunnel at the playground, that had some fun on social media, um, with a crack. Um, you'd have thought that somebody was gonna fall into China, we do appreciate the safety concern, but, um, anyway, we have turned the tunnel upside down and put duct tape over it. Uh, that is an appropriate short-term fix, however, it needs to be replaced. And so we've ordered the replacement and just so you can understand, it's not the whole tunnel, it is that section of the tunnel. And the cost of that to us is one thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
They're plastic, alright? Don't they make like, they look like metal like this and you basically, it becomes almost like a.
They do and you can't, it's really not a good option for us. Personally at home, yes, you know?
Yeah.
No, not for us at the park.
Really?
That's what I, wow, sixteen hundred bucks.
I mean, it feels like a, let's give that away, throw some duct tape over that part for sixteen hundred bucks, like, let's see how long we can make the bidget work. Oh. It seems like a lot of money.
It, it is, if you want to replace that playground, you look for the ball, five or six hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, we have cameras on this, so.
That's a good plan on.
That wear and tear, uh, you know, twenty years of wear and tear, that's not terrible, that's all that we've had to put into it. Um, but anyway, whole thing doesn't happen anymore. Uh, FEMA and MEMA were in town last week, we were looking at Upper Main Street, um, where we had the water main break, sinkhole, and now the sagging, uh, guardrail. They had come initially and they only analyzed a section of the pavement that had sunk rather than the whole picture. So they came up, remade, they allocated me ten thousand dollars and the temporary fix was, uh, the emergency fix was thirty-seven thousand. And they were only gonna give us ten, so, uh, they've come back out, they're reassessing, uh, that situation, recalculating. And we should have enough money in that initial to fix the road properly and then reset the, uh, guard. Then hazard mitigation is looking with the eighty percent funding match, potentially added on by some four oh four money, which is state funding, so that we could look to stabilize the bank in our ideal situation. We don't wanna look for the man domain situation or anything like that. The best situation to stop it naturally is to stabilize the bank. So, um, we will continue to explore that, I'm just waiting to hear from them, uh, with more information. Uh, the US Attorney's Office has came in today formally. Uh, they are seeking forfeiture of the property of one fourteen Upper Main Street. Um, not largely board involved at all, but it's been a public interest, what are we doing with these marijuana vault houses? Um, this is the first and only property to date in Norad Rock that the US Attorney's sought forfeiture of. So they have filed that with registered deeds, they're pending now in federal court, um, to take a little ownership of that. Please don't call the town office, we have zero to do with this aside from filing the paperwork in the tax file. It is to be disposed of by law from the US Marshal. Um, and if we find anything out, uh, we will post it on our social media page, but we just don't have to be, who got the same notice as filed with registered deeds plus a little bit.
Do you have any insight if they're gonna be seeking to do that and the other properties that have that?
I don't.
Which one town? No, there was no like, it was just this one specific, but it's good.
I don't.
Alright.
Uh, they initially, when they had made searches, seizures, this was what was hoped. But I think recent charges filed against the owner of this home and the situation specific to the business activity and what was found and seized made it then unique.
Okay, and it's all different owners from the different properties that have been in the town that have happened, right?
That's to the best of my.
Okay, alright.
Downtown parking lots were completed last weekend, uh, thanks to Cecil and Adrian Plus for working around everything. They did a weekend project to avoid the best they could, um, our water district project. And thanks to Six Minute Jug and Kettlers for working around a lack of parking lots, um, over that amount of time. Uh, everybody was just great to work with and I appreciate it, as well as the folks that live off the parking lot at World Street. Uh, everybody was just wonderful. Uh, they did give us the hundred dollar discount because they didn't need as much travel from World Street, so that was great. Uh, the second and final round of roadside loan was completed late last week, that will be on more for tonight. Uh, the water district, I don't wanna get too far into this, but let's just say they've caused an interrupted, uh, interruption to business downtown. Their contractor has. Um, some of it has just been unavoidable, some of it I think has been unavoidable. We've received hundreds or more calls about the project, uh, about traffic flow management, about public safety, environmental concerns. And unfortunately, we've just been forwarding that into the water district. Um, and we're hoping to try to communicate out, but things like the water, not, the water, just everybody lost their water the other night. That wasn't communicated out, we didn't know, we found out about it on social media. Um, I've offered them our resources in terms of the reach of our Facebook page, our webpage and our mass messaging system. And whether or not we advance for that, I'm not sure. The unfortunate news for us there is that this project is forecasted not to run through in October. Um, so needless to say, that's where we are, it's a part of a major and important project for the water district. We're not at night work because it would not be affordable for the water district or rate payers to move in that direction. Um, in any way, in terms of our infrastructure and investment, the only major thing that we have of concern are parking lots, which they've been respectful of. Um, and then our crosswalks, which as a part of the project will be restricted from curb to curb. So not great things there, but it is what it is. And they are our night work, tonight and tomorrow night is what's planned and they'll continue to communicate that. I did not widely broadcast that on social media and other platforms as I did the last time because it just really causes more, uh, negative attention to the project and the community because people wanna know why it wasn't done. It's all his night work and it's difficult to respond to those effectively. So to avoid the negativity, we're just going.
I, I understand that aspect of it, but knowing if you have to budget in like another ten to fifteen minutes to like get someplace in the morning, like if it, if it is tonight, that means I don't have to leave my house in the morning at the, it would be nice to know. Like if we have that information, sharing it, whether it's received negatively or positively, like, I know for me, that is the difference between sitting and waiting with a giant dog and kids in the car or not, like it's.
And, yeah, I mean, the unfortunate thing with that, and, and I get that, I do, and I appreciate it. It's just the negative optics and the lack needing to be able to guarantee that that text message goes up. Because if I send a text message, you have to be there in the morning and then they're there in the morning because they ran into someone.
Yeah.
Who are you gonna be mad at? Me and the contractor. So we're just kind of avoiding that at this point in time, the folks calling the questions will instantly just.
So the contractors are on the text we sent out.
Uh, moving on to the last section, sewer, the safety committee met and toured the wastewater treatment facility, which was in very condition. They really couldn't find much, so they tried to be constructive in terms of improvements. And one of those significant improvements was to monitor the exterior of the building because it's supposed to be a secure facility for folks to get in there. Off mischief, whatnot. Anyway, the operators will be downstairs in the basement, it's not headline site, where should people be checking in? So there's a signage component which is nominal, but then they also suggested the exterior surveillance. MMA has a risk reduction grant, which would cover one hundred percent of that installation. So I filed for that, hopefully, um, that'll look who we're able to roll that out on that property, which is another, um, move in the right direction in terms of protecting our assets for damage. And then the contractors have GPS mapping, uh, there is a check on the warrant tonight for them for nine thousand dollars. The initial contract was twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Uh, they failed to complete, uh, the terms of the original contract, they completed one hundred of approximately three hundred twenty-five locates. My target for negotiating with them was nine thousand, that's what they came to with the initial offer, not out to, um, take it away from them. They started to invest a lot of time and efforts. Um, Robbie, member of the sewer commission noted, they could have come out and better planned, researched, proposed to us, so they'll know we'll give their all say, but, um, the nine thousand dollars, I think it's a fair and reasonable price that is paid from the Tiff previously approved by the board. So I paid more.
Okay, is it too late, I, one more thing that I forgot, in the members' report, um, there was a great tournament, the Run Robin for Soccer. I think it went extremely well, like it was, you know, varsity soccer team and I was in the rapping and it was, it was a fantastic event. One thing that I did notice or something that we probably should be looking at in the future is, um, we all always get, even though there's some signage for not parking like behind where like the, um, softball dugouts are, people are just parking in there and like, for example, like if you had to pull in to bring stuff to the snack shack, you then got trapped. People were parking right up into it, even I put out trash cans so that people want to do it, they moved the trash cans. And so, no, I wasn't confused with that, but thinking about like, if one of those kids got hurt, an ambulance had to get in. We have no way of getting emergency response vehicles anywhere to that field when that's all blocked. So if we have some, we must have like some sort of like emergency, whether it's like those saw horse things or something. But like, I think that when we have things like that, we need to bring those out for any events because.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, it was just, all I'm thinking is like, okay, you can, there was literally nowhere to go, like people parked in everywhere. If an ambulance had to come in, they would walk the entire length of the field to get to it, there was nowhere to go. And like, just putting up a trash can, which you think would stop people, no, they're fair into that stuff and they're just pulling it. So we need to do something where there's better signage, but like blocking away so that there's accessibility, I think is gonna be important moving forward there, especially with like the night games that we have coming up with soccer, so just something to be thinking about, um. That's all.
Right on, okay. Uh, okay, moving forward here, number six here, discussion action on September eighteenth general warrant number sixteen.
I move to approve general warrant number sixteen, the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion, a second, uh, any discussion?
The thirteen hundred for Shawman says that we can't work, I think.
No, those are actually tax overpayments where taxpayers paid and then mortgage toll was paid. So we customarily refund, not to touch our escrow, we refund to the taxpayer.
Okay, right on, anything else? See nothing, all those in favor? That is everyone. Uh, discussion action on Sept- uh, September eighteenth, airport warrant number nine.
I move to approve airport warrant number nine, the amount of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
It's a motion, second, a second, a lot of that's reimbursed, right?
How much does it reimburse?
So ninety-five percent of that twenty-three thousand is reimbursed. The fifteen thousand and the fourteen thousand are set for resale at approximately sixty to eighty cents per gallon mark.
Where the hell is, how are they doing with fuel and sales and?
It's down.
Price.
Our price is very competitive, where we're trying to beat everybody by pennies necessarily, we're relatively competitive on the expensive stuff. But our sales have just tanked largely when FAA took our ability to market it away from the public far. And then you saw non-aptional sales start showing up at local retailers. Unfortunately, the airport, but you know, if it can be offered in private sector, it's where it belongs.
Right.
Uh, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
Yes.
Uh, discussion action on September eighteenth sewer commitment.
Move to approve this sewer commitment, the amount of twenty-six thousand, eighty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Second, motion, a second, any discussion? See none, all those in favor? Everyone? Uh, public comment? Just crickets out there, what are we? Nothing? Okay.
No.
Oh, man. So close, go ahead.
You made it, almost missed. So, two weeks ago, I came in and talked, um, about firefighting foam. And I said, what, I, I gave you my preliminary research, which said the firefighting class A foam that we use and has approximately a hundred and thirty gallons in inventory does not contain PFAS, but that I wanted to check with BP. And I hadn't received a call back. I did, shortly after our meeting the next day or so. Um, the lady confirmed everything that I learned and then reminded me that it comes in a five gallon plastic jug. So a better statement might be that, um, there are no measurable or detectable levels of PFAS in this product as it's manufactured.
Thank you for.
But they do ship it to us in five gallon jug, so.
Yeah, yeah.
To come out right and say it does not contain is probably a bit irresponsible. Um, and that may be true of like anything these days.
Yeah.
Um, but it is, it is not intentionally added, it's not there in detectable levels as manufactured. It says, does not contain on the product data sheet.
So just use it as a drinking trough when it's done, that bucket.
Well, it's not like you have a big option, do you, like, as far as where to source that foam?
In general statement is the firefighting class A foam that we use generally do not contain, uh, PFAS anyway, but I wanted to kind of make sure. And you don't think of us as having a hundred and thirty gallons of it, what we do. Generally the class B, that's a bigger problem here, runs with and other places, um, but it was worth looking into and.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you, man.
But by the way, in case anybody asks you, even if it did contain PFAS and it doesn't to any measurable levels, it is still legal, laws and rules to use it in the manner that it's prescribed. So if it's firefighting foam and it's meant to put out fires, it's still legal to, to use it, even if it did. It runs with, for example, instead of, so if they had used it to put out fires, it's not legal about that or against any rules. So, um, using it in the manner which it's manufactured and, and prescribed is always okay. So, I will sign that. Somebody's gonna see us at some point using foam and ask a bunch of questions, and they should. But I want to give those to you a little bit better.
Thank you. Too late, yeah.
Two minutes is up.
He had to.
It's a total of two minutes.
Yes. Do you have to do my? No, uh, are you any more, any closer to being better with this new contract? I know we've been discussing it.
Uh, the town, uh, I, I couldn't even comment on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying you've been quite a few times now and.
Uh, Jesus, it, it is on our agenda for today, I wasn't sure, but it, it is, it is.
Because just one point you were thinking, you know, been here all your life and I've seen a lot of different town managers. I think the town is more solvent now than it has been in quite some time. And I would hate to think that we would lose him to what should he, it will become terms of terms. I don't know what the terms are, but I'm just.
Why don't we take out the speed bump?
Right, so you're saying you don't want me as your town manager? You'd like to keep them, okay. I, I think the board has received that.
That, that, but that would be an absolutely you are right on that because I have to take the speed bump up myself and shove it.
All right, all right, thank you, Mike.
We have jumped the sharply, gentlemen, we have.
Stay posted for results on your question. Uh, moving forward here, uh, public hearing on proposed uses for twenty-two Mercer Road property.
We're gonna end this off real quick and just for, oh, probably those folks that are here in the room, but folks that are online now or later. Uh, the property is at twenty-two, now twenty-two Mercer Road, it's adjacent to the school, formerly known as the Gator Lock. Um, the town, the board, put it to voters to consider and the idea at the time was very open and public that we didn't know what we were gonna do with it, but that it presented a high value opportunity for the community at large, uh, to do something with it. And it was also posed a high risk to watch somebody else potentially do something with it. So once the voters passed in a fairly decent margin, um, and we have since acquired that property. And the commitment of the board, the administration is that we're gonna have a massive amount of public involvement determining course of this property and its potential development. So, um, I posted on social media last week when I was pulling the agenda together, it generated a lot of discussion. All of that, I've noted in the file and calculated, um, but we want to encourage people to come in, send emails or call members of the board or administration, and participate in the project. Uh, in two minutes, there's gonna be a survey that's gonna drop online, that people will be able to go online, submit their ideas and we're gonna tabulate all of that, calculate that. Not the popular opinion rule, but we want a massive amount of participation, not just from Norad Rock residents, taxpayers, but at large. Um, I, I really can't undersell how important of a property and project this stands to be. So, um, I've received, I think, seventy somewhat comments, each one of them having their own light. Um, and I had only, that'd be the end of my summary, I guess. Um, and then I had received one piece of direct contact with regards to the lot and they were opposed to it being used as parking, especially if it's specifically used for the school because the school has had the opportunity. And he compounded the thought by saying, the value of parking for the school there does not merely address. And he compounded the thought by saying the value of parking for the school there does not merely address. The need for parking at the school when they need parking. So that a ten to twenty lots at that, when they need parking, they need another hundred spots. So that was an old piece of, uh, direct communication that I heard and, uh, so that's all for me.
Okay, uh, board, have you guys have looked at it? But you like, you see it running there, you think that's.
Yeah.
Adequate, should it be something else, something?
We're actually talking about that.
Oh, just to make sure.
Did that not already go out?
To get the brainstorming, that survey is. Just put at the front door, uh, tonight after we close, it's online right now. It's scheduled to drop at six thirty. We can tweak it if we want to.
I thought.
But we're not, but we're still having a public hearing right now.
Collect in-person thoughts, what folks have that maybe they're interested by a service. And candidly, you know, administration. I'd like to fish with people who show up and wanna talk to you about it. I think this, uh, may be a greater problem for that folks' whole setup.
I just wish, I mean, like we obviously can't use it for school parking, it's town money, not like the. Or should we maybe kind of fade that here and here so we don't get so many comments back like, park it for the school because of the, so it's like. That, that way it's like, all right, well, let me think of something else now because if that's the only thing you're thinking of is parking, then they might not come up with another. Idea that's more viable for us.
Oh, quickly jump back in and then we'll be done. It could be parked for the school. That was one opinion that came to me. We made no commitment from the board. Maybe it's not, very likely not gonna be, it's top economic development. But this is a process that's gonna be pulled out a little bit and gonna have to be concluded probably by January one. If you wanna consider any sort of funding mechanism during the winter. So we're gonna have phases and if parking comes in as top, whether or not the board chooses to move that forward is up to the board. And we'll narrow it down probably with the intervention.
To, to get to that end point though. Could be used as a whole, as it stands now. Just as a temper, just because it's gravel, I mean, it's just the order of opening up the gate, could, could it be as not, just. Not, not, not the end result.
It's now a town property liability, if something happens that.
Well, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Yeah, something happens to someone's car, it gets vandalized, we're liable for stuff like that, I'd imagine.
Gee, that's why you have these things right here.
Uh, anything from the public?
I, I thought so, I.
These are not my handouts.
Okay.
Just the administrative side.
Gee, am I missing something?
All right.
Yep.
Basically, because it's back lawn.
Nope. No, I don't.
It's pitfall court.
Oh, I thought it was. Yeah.
There's a presentation that goes with that.
Fire away, please.
I propose a pitfall court just because it's a very social area and the game of pickleball is extremely social and you get to meet. All kinds of people when you do it. It's a wonderful community gathering spot when you play in this game. Um, I also propose that it's. For pickleball, not a multi-use, that's just my own selfish. Because having in-ground nets is different from having a hall of net there. And the location is absolutely perfect just because it's a very secure location. I think the amount attracts both sides, maybe. That makes somebody look bad vandalizing. That's, you know, if it was somewhere else off the road somewhere that maybe kids would hang off of. But in general, I do love the spot, it's really great. If there was lighting, then we could play from March until November. So, and although the people in Brunswick play year round outside, you know, that's why they can play football players, aren't they? Clean off the courts in January and they play. I don't know if we have the. But we have a little more certainty, but in other areas, Chinese grade school has four dedicated outside courts are used all the time. Asalowski has six dedicated there, it's, you know, at the high school. And they're used all the time, it's very busy. So I do think. Uh, my friend, our friend, uh, that plays in Orange Rock, he's an engineer and he first unlocked it up. He could, you could put six, it's too much. That's a taste squeeze. I like the number four is from between the courts, you know, and he said, if you put in three, you could add purple on the end. So, which is an idea, but more than likely you could use a school card on more, it's unique.
So I would just add that the town of Orange Rock does a ton of stuff for their young people. And the youth programs and be, and what a, what a perfect opportunity to gymnasium, it hasn't been recently, but as soon as. Colder weather gets here. The gymnasium will be full of people playing pickleball every Thursday night with three nets going and you're gonna be waiting to play. So I think it's a good opportunity to do something for our adult population. Hyaques at the Sula Parks is a great idea. I see people using those, you know, just give another activity for adults. We've got young people playing too, but adults would be able to go and be able to play.
And this is a sport that you can play with a ten-year-old up to eighty. One of the best people I met in Orange Rock, she's eighty years old, she just turned eighty and she's a very good player. So it's just fun to see, you have no idea. The, um, community. Also, it could be used for, I will get this chance to have tournaments there. I think of Uso Days. Like have a pretty little tournament outside as a fundraiser for an event, you know, for some cause. So just many uses, so many tournaments around and they're all very busy. Everybody's looking forward to the next tournament and.
Yeah.
We go wherever they're working, so people will love to travel.
Sounds like a volunteer for the erect department.
I know, right? Yeah. No, this is nicely done. I like this and it kind of, you know, makes it a little easier to picture when you have something like this.
Isn't that what it requires a lot of pens around it, it's on the road, you're hitting it up.
I think you really have a, a good idea.
Yeah, I guess.
Can I just ask a question? Not to pull away from it, it, does that interface with any other sports like tennis?
If you put a tennis court in with permanent tennis, then you can't have permanent pickleball nets in. Because it's a smaller court, you put two pickleball courts in one tennis court.
Yes.
And therefore you can't permit it. And there are. You know, there are lines everywhere for pickleball, but if you don't own your own net, you'd have to show up with your own net. But the idea to have. Just pickleball when there is, uh, already new tennis courts in Scouting High School have just been built and made. So there you have tennis, so you could go down there and play tennis. They, they have painted lines on their tennis court, but there's no nets. So again, you'd have to bring your own stop and that would just have, yeah, it's just not.
Yeah.
We had tennis courts.
No, well, that's what's a big, like she said, they're quite large in comparison.
Our tennis court.
Chuck, can you?
There's priority in this pocket because everything gets so big there. You don't have that room for parking.
Well, that's, uh, so like in one of their drawings here, they actually have provided a few spaces here, uh, which. There's a plausibility to that. I mean, as well as in that particular location, there's no. Ooh, I don't wanna miss speech. Is there a reason you can't park on the side of the road right there?
No.
As a private person, I mean, we can't post it as parking, but you could technically park on the side of the road.
Wide enough that I'd have to park that much, but I don't think it's.
Can you park that enough properly?
It's, very likely would cause problems with the intersection and then DMT wouldn't cover most of the parking.
Right. So if we do, if, so if we end up in something like this, are we gonna want to look at parking being parked? Or are we gonna rely on the school parking lot to provide parking?
Is this eighty fifty four? We have unlimited use of that parking.
Oh, yes, yes, but in, in a, it, it's comes into a numbers thing, right? If there's something in the gym and there's something on a wheel, it'll, it'll be tough to find a spot for you.
I mean, the other thing with that is we've got other parking, we've got. Which would just down the street.
You would just pay for the parking lots or?
Usually on the weekends, the doctor's office down there, there's nothing in there.
Got the green.
Granted, people would have to walk a little bit, but.
Technically, right, because I would, I would hate to lose any of that space to park.
Yeah, I, I.
I would, I would, but I don't wanna be a burden somewhere.
I prefer not to use it as parking spaces because, you know, ninety percent of the time, ninety-nine percent. This school's not gonna have anything going on, you can just park there, park there. Use the ball fields back in of the court bodies. They can walk, play pickleball, they can walk to the bathrooms.
Yes.
Are we supposed to share our thoughts during a public hearing?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just have one second?
Yeah.
Are you able to send these to me in electronic? The plans, just so that I have them for future.
Who has them sent you?
Thank you, okay. It'd be nice to have one of these. We don't know, because I think it is one of the sole spot, for a little narrowly, it's a popular idea.
At least the two feet.
No, one of them.
No, one of them.
What was that?
Sandy, help.
Uh, I would just say, I, I play pickleball on Thursdays, so I would say thank you to Sandy for keeping that going and. We'll just attest to the community building as people who are newer to Orange Rock, it's been a great way for us to get to know people. Um, and be active, we're not the most active people, but pickleball is super like accessible, so I love that about it, um. So I think it would be a great opportunity for both younger people and older people in our community. I think it would actually look really good from the road. Um, like a nice public recreation space. I also agree, I think the four courts would be that better, like. Like they were saying, when we play in the winter, the three courts, like you're waiting a while. To get into a game and if more people wanted to come and play, because I do think it would attract more, there would be space for that and I think. Looks like there's like six parking spots there and. Like, like we've said, I think we could just use school parking, so. Yeah, I think it would be a great use of that space.
What's your thoughts about? That's face two, that's face one, we'll get some ideas.
Right. What's the next? One of the unique things about this property is I think it does present itself to. Pickleball courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, or things like that. It's been fully reconstructed already. Previous owner had excavated and patented material put in, so, um, there are pickleball court installers. I know one. In Belgrade, Waterville area, um, but we, we're able to get price codes for multiple people that, you know, it doesn't cost us anything to gather that information.
I would also think that there might be people, um. Or organizations that are willing to donate to things that create like healthy habits in a community.
There are also.
If there are some that still like us.
Right, there's that and then there are also brands through the state that can fund, I think fifty percent of the, I want to follow right now. They actually reached out to us after the useful part development to say, if you're doing anything else, keep us in mind. Uh, yeah, anything else on the, uh. Public hearing here for the Mercer Road property?
Fine, what's going on? A little bit stored.
Oh, okay, all right, so you're towards the old daycare center, right?
Yeah.
Okay, right on. Uh, it's, it's kind of, it's, uh. We, we have a proposal here, uh, that was brought in by a citizen, uh, and potentially they have it as pickleball courts. Uh, but it's pretty up in the air. Uh, there's a survey online where you can fill it out, put your thoughts in. If you have any right now, you can throw them to the board. It is a public hearing, you're free to speak. But we're very up in the air, right?
Yeah. Come by, because I live right next to one.
Yeah, you certainly have the best of interests.
Do you have any initial concerns about any proposed projects? You've probably heard or seen a lot.
Yeah.
Direct about it.
Tennis courts or whatever.
You don't have any concerns at the gate?
Not really.
That's good enough. Oh, anything else? Anything else on the board? Anything else in the? Crickets, okay, uh, with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, no, right on, thank you. We'll, we'll keep you in the loop as far as that goes. Uh, okay, moving forward here, uh, number eleven, discussion action on fire, 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 trailer bid award.
Uh, we have actually good collection bids ranging from five hundred up to thirteen hundred. Uh, your top bidder is Carl Dubay, uh, the bid is one thousand three hundred dollars. The recommendation from the department is to accept that. Um, and as previously discussed, uh, the proceeds to be deposited into their special revenue account. For use, uh, for purchase of future equipment.
So I move to accept the bid from Carl Dubay, an amount of thirteen hundred dollars for the, uh, five by fourteen trailer.
Second, motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Chuck, how do you feel about it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's everybody. Uh, okay, uh, discussion action on disposal of fire safety truck.
Good to you.
Yes, so, uh, thanks, so. If you're familiar, I'm not sure if you are or not, uh, I intended to bring up this photo, but. But we do have a nineteen eighty. Chevrolet Duel, it's only a two-wheel drive, but it's a. Dooley this far. Two-wheel drive pickup that was donated by CMP. In about nineteen ninety-five. It's in pretty tough shape, but those tend to be, it's an old Chevy square body, so they tend to be quite popular. Uh, I think it overall a lot of interest. We have, um, disposed now of our fire safety trailer. We no longer have a need to own this truck. It is, it represents, um. Expanse, uh, and, and a nuisance in a way, and we would like to put that out to bid similar to what we just did with the trailer. And, uh, again, put the money in the same special revenue account for funding future projects, specifically I'm thinking of. Oh. How, right, as, as you've seen already, our capital project plan. So, um. We, we've been dusting this thing off and shoveling it out now for two or three years and it's time to go. That's how it works.
Okay. Okay.
I motion to put it out to the.
Are we doing any sort of reserve on it? Like, I mean, cars are fairly easy to figure what the actual values are of them, so are we placing a?
No.
I, I think the board reduces discussion after the fact.
Okay.
We, when we put a reserve on this, we'll pump truck, we did it.
Okay. Next one, that we allow the nineteen eighties for a Chevrolet fire safety truck to go out to bid.
Good, it's a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number thirteen here, discussion action on junkyard renewal application.
I move to approve the junkyard renewal application for Sun Auto and Salvage.
And it is, sorry, uh, any discussion?
Just a little earlier, there's no complaints there.
That's a question right there, how, not, okay, good, and it looks good, I think they did a good job up there. Okay, anything else? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor? Chuckie, how you feel about Sun Auto?
Going to hell with it, yeah.
Okay. That's it, that's everybody.
See, they're not all for painting or.
Okay, number fourteen. Uh, public hearing on proposed general assistance ordinance and appendices.
This is largely a formality, um. Where every October first, new maximums, uh, are enacted. So this is a two-part act because municipal associations recommend making changes to the ordinance itself. Largely to add, um, recovery residents as a part of its coverage, which is required by statute though. And so that's component A is the ordinance itself, and then we start talking about the appendices to the ordinance. Which are the maximums, so your overall maximum now, uh, on a household of one. By any emergency exception, if you make more than eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars a month, you're not eligible for general assistance. This goes through food allowances, heating allowances, um. Your housing amount, allowances, heated, unheated, personal care items, household items, supplementals for young children. And then your electric bill without pot water. So you see those numbers there largely, they didn't change. Um, over last year or they changed just there minimum. So I'm happy to take any questions or comments. I will tell you that you cannot decrease these, but as a town, you may increase them. If you increase them, then the town is responsible then for the difference in the increase.
I'm content.
Are we, and are, we're in a public hearing, yeah?
We are, yes.
Anything from the public on that? Does the board have any preference on these? I feel comfortable with the minimums provided by the state. Like maximums. Uh, you have to, to both close the public hearing, uh, and you don't need anything else on that, do you?
No, I, no, we're public here.
All right, yeah, that's what you, uh, number fifteen, discussion action on general assistance ordinance appendices adoption revised two thousand and twelve.
This would be a motion in order to adopt the general assistance ordinance and appendices revised by municipal association two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion. Second, any further discussion?
Is that part of that? Big file that you said this was a hundred and thirty pages long that I weren't about to read through every?
You read through all of it, right, is your speed reader?
No, that's, was there anything major in there that?
No, the only substantive change to that was the.
First, I'm a. But I'm good.
Um, all those paper? It's everybody? Uh, number sixteen, discussion action on local philanthropy contributions.
All right, so this kind of candidly flew to my radar until I started planning for twenty-five budget season and I didn't have people knocking at the door. So um, whether or not they need it, I'm not sure enough for me to speculate. I have approved two hundred dollars from this budget year to date, which was from for the Masonic watch to support the bike support program, which happens in every spring and little string. So that has never been a contested expense. So I have approved that already. However, I know that this budget can sometimes be contentious or whatnot, choose your word. Um, and so here is before the, I have done a summary document for you for the requesting organizations in terms of are they repeat requesters or are they not? Did they submit a request? Have they demonstrated the need? Uh, we've asked them to list their location. Do they serve our residents? If so, the number, serve, the estimated value of the service, an annual operations update, what are they doing? What are they doing with our money? Uh, and then a financial report or summary. Um, and so in that document that I sent to you in your preview pack, I did that for you, trying to just shorten it up a little bit. And so you have requests totally nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three moving out the two hundred that is already paid, and then you have seven thousand eight hundred dollars that you can appropriate to um different organizations.
Are we looking to approve or, I mean, we're not.
Uh, uh, I'm gonna speak probably out of order in terms of administration, but we've always said if people don't ask or they don't respond to us, that we don't award.
Yeah.
Um, and so then I think you look at their level of responsiveness. And that's how I raise that in terms of moderately responsive, fully responsive.
Yeah.
And then I think that you folks are able to drill down into where you want to see the money go in terms of impact to the community.
So I have a question. It was like Memorial Day cemetery flags downtown flags, like who would you just request that?
Holy white, it's still white. So administration normally submits a request for that.
Okay.
And it was always built into this last year budget cycle. I think it was Kelsey that recognized we pulled those into the.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense. It's just a yearly expense we made to put it on.
Yes, alright. Yeah, right. So those were reallocated over to cemeteries and maybe the unclassified or something like that. So those were always in here and they, as a part of the budget process, they were removed. And that number stayed the same in terms of how much was allocated.
Yeah.
Historic society.
Yeah, why aren't they?
The historical society did not request this year uh because they did receive a substantive uh improvement that yet from a private individual, um, resident, late resident of the town. And so they didn't feel appropriate coming to the public office or seeing a large.
Okay.
Um, for the large organizations that are required to file Form nine ninety, that's a federal disclosure for nonprofits. If you have over fifty thousand dollars in average receipts, you have to file with the federal government. So I pulled the most recent filing, which is twenty twenty-two, and I provided that for you. And I'll say not to dissuade you or persuade you, but in fact, it times is um, when you have an organization that has cash savings, accounts receivable, investments totaling thirty-five million dollars, and they're coming and asking us for one or two hundred dollars, would you rather push that to the side and consider investing in your own community? So I did give that, and I think that it's a full transparency thing that is, they did not offer that information to us. So I would. We've got a representative from the audience here to speak. Request. Go from the summer segment.
Fire away. Who's got the?
Did we request anything?
It was one thousand five hundred dollars. Did we really?
That's, that's.
That's convincing.
So I go in here, I think the conversation we had last year was, um, that with Kelsey's that instead of creating a budget line for these particular budgets, take each request, put the, put the money in a pot of money, and if you get a request, you can award your request, then the board makes a decision to issue this and not have it in line item. You know, in particular budget, I think that's not the conversation. But no input, um, great.
Could you speak to the Grange's need? I mean, you are a signatory in the letter.
Yeah.
Yes.
So Grange right now is is um trouble, like every other organization. The town graciously gave them a fifty thousand dollar facade improvement grant, which they used to put all the windows in and to, I don't know, what else did we do? We did.
Rock repair.
Tiding and just, we did a ton of work there. So the outside of the building is in really good shape now. Inside of the building, not so great. We've been doing, we've ramped up our public suffers again now. So we're making, you know, three, four hundred bucks a pop there to use that for oil and water and all of the expenses and utility that we anticipate um with the hope of trying to start building up a small pool of money to start working on the inside of the building. So that's our next goal, to get people back going to Grange again, and then build up, you know, for three thousand bucks to fix the floor or to put a new furnace in or to, I mean, you know, in the past, I've heard, you know, Grange has this big pot of gold out there. Ain't there? Nickel, uh, you know, it's it's like, yeah. So anyway, we're doing our suffers again. I think those are going very well. And I appreciate the town supporting those on the physical stage. Kind of civic organization, uh, you know, it's there, the building's available. Um, in most situations, we we look at those one at a time to make sure that we can accommodate a need. If we can't, we can't, um, we should close in the winter, because we don't want to eat it all with the bucks. The gorgeous hundred and fifty year old building, so. Sure, you'd mind, but I don't know what to tell you.
Right, makes sense. Who knows?
Right, right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is, I got, okay, I mean, it's it's hard when they've got like net gains and like, no, and they don't even like, it's not even it's just an automated thing. It's just like a cut and paste that's probably by a bot, like that one feels a little bit. I'd rather be giving to the Grange where they can actually see the impact of the community than something like that. I'm just with you. And the, or the ones that like, you know, like hospice definitely, you know, you can see that that's a value add of the influence farm, but it's also struggling and really are more in need financially than some of the other ones.
Yeah, no, for sure. How do you think you'd like to make a motion to grant an organization and start the process? Uh, yeah.
No.
So those two, that will, uh, how has KB cap transportation? And so we have the requests and we're not, uh, we gave them for a long time. And I know for a while they were really doing a good job at town. And then I don't know if they trailed off, we lost their responsive. I I don't know what happened.
They're bringing, they need over a million dollars.
Yeah, what I I promoted them largely because it, we have a transit oriented shift.
Yeah.
And so the idea is that we would support that. Um, and they used to have their regular stop, they will street and things like that. And we don't see them around.
Well, that was what I, I don't, I don't see them at all. Like, I think it's a, I've seen the.
I think it's a COVID continuance, and KD cap was more focusing on individual riders as opposed to, um, you know, your mass transit.
Okay, so if you remove uh KB cap, we're able to fund everything else, correct?
That's correct.
So why don't we just do that? That sounds well with the rest of the board. In the request, if you take the request line, pull up uh KB cap and just fund the rest.
Thanks.
At at their request, unless the board has a relation.
We have to fund them all?
No, you don't have to.
I mean, the the three I am in favor of are the Summer Prep Grange, Sportsman Association, and Norwich Rock Christmas Program. I'm hesitant with the Christmas Program only because from my work at the high school, like I, I know students like to raise money for that program, and I don't want that to become something that we're more funding than encouraging, like.
Good, yeah, that's a tough one.
Do you know what I mean? Uh, but it sounded like in the letter, like they're not getting as much support as usual, but I also know that if you went to those students and said, hey, we need you to raise this much more, they would be like. So that's my only, I love that.
My one, if someone figured it, you could figure out if that happened.
Yeah, okay, I'll try. Yeah, I say more money we throw at like those kids. I mean, like, so, I mean, like in years past when we've gone, I mean, like, these kids are asking for like places, they're asking like, can I have some snow pants?
Yeah.
Boots, like, you know, like.
Underwear, pajamas.
There's always kids who need something, so like, kids raising money for that, but then also I was throwing, I would rather that than like, you know, life like that's like net gains of like almost ten million dollars. I'd rather kids had boots and warm feet, like, and like
Yeah.
that are actual Norwich Rock, like, kids, like a hundred times over. Same thing with like, even like maybe, oh, like, it's just like. Do they need our tax money or their?
So you guys have a bit of tip on me.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know.
Uh, so the great, the consensus is the Grange is requesting fifteen hundred dollars. I'm just speaking from Kelsey's perspective here. And maybe somebody will make that motion. Grange is requesting fifteen hundred dollars. The Sportsman Association is requesting two thousand, and the Norwich Rock Christmas Program is requesting a thousand.
And I say whatever hospice asks for, we give that to them as well, looking at their operational costs and how they're feeling, because I think that that's a, you know, what they do is.
And hospice of Somerset County is requesting a thousand.
Yeah.
I hope that we grant those requests to said individual organizations.
Motion.
Okay.
Second, uh, any discussion?
My one thing is, is this the last year we're doing this?
Uh, that will be a later discussion for the.
Okay. I feel like we like had that conversation last year and then it
We couldn't.
it kind of got stuck in there again and anyway.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so all those in favor with the ones we've listed? It's everybody? Uh, does anybody feel strongly enough about another one to make a motion? Or shall we move forward? Is everybody?
I move, going forward.
I'm going going forward, and I I I think it makes sense to leave that money there. And if like a need comes up and an organization organization comes forward, then like we have some money to say, hey, that's in school, you know?
The other thing to consider is, do we want to begin the petition process? And it's a giant pain and it can be an obstacle to organizations that don't have a lot of help, say like the Grange. Uh, but if you needed to get ten percent of signatures, so you need sixty signatures or something, and that then just puts you on the time name warrant. You get your own article to open that.
Actually.
No, so that's, that's what a lot, that's just kind of it.
Yeah, that's.
That's.
That's a part show.
Right. And they're, that character is.
Should we just?
It's just take it out, like, we had talked last time to just not even have to be part of our budget, like, we couldn't get out of it last year because of the timing of it. And so moving forward, we can't do what we can now and.
I'm not, I'm okay with budgeting a fund.
Do you want us to take a little time to go over with how we want to do this?
This is all about.
For you, we need it right here on moving forward next year, where we see this separate account, we just decide as they come in, you wanna?
They're already, I already have a list.
I know, like, and I don't, I think the town in the past, incorrect me from wrong, but we've sent out like a, hey, let us know. I don't want to do that anymore.
It's already gone.
Okay, so that's what, then when we do that, then I feel like we have to.
But I only sent them because I started getting them.
Right.
And I don't want to leave an organization at a disadvantage, because that was one thing that was talked about from the public, the board, I think it was.
Right.
This one didn't respond by the dead of.
Yeah.
So when I started receiving them from organizations, I've never received them before. That's when I'm like, okay, I've got to get the organizations that have always requested from us and ask them to start gathering information. And the other thing is maybe you start, maybe you do allocate funds, and you just hold them to the highest standard of draft. You ask for finances. You've had two organizations, I think, that actually said, this is what's in our bank account, this is what went up last year. And by the way, we're in one of them. And maybe that's how you look at it. And you just say, look, if you want to make your private donations, make your private donations.
Yeah.
It's difficult, because every organization is a part of somebody, but now it is done. Somebody like Life, like, we help out already because of the technology that we pay and maintain at the airport. We do that as a community.
We put in new lights, new runways, parking.
Right, that's, it's it's a tremendous value that Life, like, in the areas around us. So I can at least say that we do. Fine. Fine. We'll have this discussion when we start our budget.
Okay.
In a really, really tight one way or another, and that's what we can do, but and maybe we're the article that says it's for Norwich Rock organizations or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Thank you. Number seventeen, discussion action on ordinance review. Yeah, expense appropriation, yep.
So we probably would have been looking to update ordinances, and every time they do that, they get sidetracked in application. Uh, waste management application or subdivision application or whatnot. And in the last few meetings, they've been dealing with shoreline and subdivision. And they recently just did a building subdivision, which more and more common now. Uh, I expect to see more in terms of a more than three, a three or more unit building. So, um, you start reviewing the criteria for subdivision, and you're like, wow, this really is old, it's outdated, it's not applicable, or doesn't align with state statute. So there's that. And then the shoreline zoning, which is something that we hadn't really dealt a lot with up until the last year and a half or two that I've been here. Um, and the state is just moving fast and quick to update shoreline zoning things. Uh, things like uh, square footage on your floor plan, as opposed to now it's considered by volume, your expansion. Our ordinance is very out of date. And so the planning board has dealt with an outdated shoreline zoning ordinance, recently even application. The assistance of the applicant's consultant who navigated through and what was done right. But I really think that things like that, if you want investment, especially along the river, you have to make sure that we're buttoned up. And so I went to KB father, those two ordinances and asked them, what would it look like for us at a member rate to get these two reviewed? Then make the recommendations, come to the planning board, have the planning board review, understand why the changes were made. If the planning board has additional things that they want to put in, great. Um, and we do that back and forth, and then forward it to you folks, or consideration is sent to them. They estimated it at thirty-two hundred dollars plus expenses to get those two ordinance on the dock.
Okay, that's good. The wording had it scared.
Yeah, so the planning board only has a thousand dollars in their consulting budget, which great, but that's not going to obviously do it. So the question to you folks is would you like to authorize this expense? And if you do, would you like to authorize contingency for another fund? Uh, would you say it's ten thousand?
Would you say it's one, two hundred, or the whole thirty-two?
I would recommend thirty-two hundred and a lot of the planning board to sort of expenses under their department budget.
Oh, okay.
It's a matter of which fund you would take it from.
Yeah, okay.
And at this point in time, I can't see it to be easy enough to allocate it in this moment.
And but if that then goes over kind of into their bucket, then we can, for future budgeting purposes, we can see that they actually need that additional expenditure to, because I guess that's the only thing that's outdated with things like that, that we're going to have to address for them. We need to understand our operational budget.
If this process goes well, then the planning board, they're like the tobacco mess for another three, four, or five.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Take another couple of ordinances to make sure we're staying current.
Yeah.
We have ordinances that are from the eighties and early nineties.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's just not serving your town. Well, when you're talking about back to development, development is your element, yeah.
Yeah.
And we feel like that's a fair
Yeah.
amount of times, forty hours of work.
It's a book or all, I don't know.
Well, it's consultants, right? We could go, and this is a discount, mind you.
Okay.
And they're really going to be redrafting um ordinances in whole. They're going to come here and meet with the planning board twice is the intention. They're going to meet with you once. Um, and this is an estimate, right? But.
Okay. That, I mean, that makes sense, but it's not just like writing.
You start talking about consulting firms and it's gonna be a lot more.
Okay, I I feel like that's a better value than, because then we can have input, whether it's like things we want to make sure that we are allowing to happen, you know, and maybe things that we're trying to make sure put language in and make it more difficult to do, um, you know, shore stuff like ordinances aren't my jam, but don't other towns have ordinances and you can't just like
Yeah, well, they're all kind of copy and paste, but they're all unique as well.
Okay.
So there'll be some tweaking there, I'm sure. And then the legal mumbo jumbo to make sure it all jobs for our town. And then you pay thirty-two hundred bucks.
We don't pay for that.
That's, that's for sure.
That's always up.
I mean, I could theoretically copy and paste a bunch of ordinances, try to blend them together, and then you're going to be on the hook for fifteen hundred dollar legal bill. And nobody to, nobody, that's just to review it, probably mark it up again. But then nobody to mindfully and fully knowledgefully walk the planning board through.
Yeah.
Really the process of self-determination, like, we, here's the information, but we want you to be able to make the decisions for yourself. And that's what these folks specialize in, their planners. So you don't want me and Chuckie to write all the notices.
Just check this, oh, come on now, I feel like I.
No, you were, I mean, right, no, exactly. So that's, yeah.
Sure.
No, that's good. And that that's cheaper than what I was expecting. So I I'm pretty pleased with that. And hopefully this works. Uh, so do you want a motion on that?
If we could have a motion to authorize the expense of up to thirty-two hundred dollars uh from contingents.
So.
Motion. A second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody? Uh, discussion action on animal control, regionaliza- uh, regionalization letter.
And what, what? So, I'm hoping, yeah, okay, the letter dated to our package didn't make its mind. So I drafted a letter for you after the last meeting to send to the county commissioners um, to ask them to consider, um, regionalizing animal control, employ four, five, six people theoretically, provide them with vehicles, proper training, and then create redundancies in the region. So they're going to They're gonna provide services to us, but they can help Mercer, Scaringan, you know, if this isn't happening, then the sheriff's team, the home identity service, they'll welcome their services. Everybody's under service, right now, on fact, the date is that Scaringan doesn't have any animal control officer, so I assume PD's managing that and then uniquely provides us with some money. Right, and so I met with the administrator and I was up there. It was, I was at the registry, so I stopped in to see him and I talked to him about former manager of Madison. And it's a struggle everywhere, especially in non-organized territories. And so he thought there would be something that would reasonably be discussed and I told him, we don't come to the county asking for something, nothing, we're obviously going to put our money behind it to support it.
Yeah.
Um if we have effective and responsive services and it's not that we're not pleased with our animal control officer, it's that one individual doing that job for a large number of communities just as. So uh I've sent this to your preview, if you have any changes, we can make that, um other than that, it would be a motion to sign and send and I will note that I. Have proposed ceasing every community in Somerset County with this and hope to battle against this, express opposition or support.
Yeah.
Alright, so I move that we sign and send this letter.
Motion. Okay, second, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody?
I'm a crime.
Yep, I like that. Okay, number nineteen, discussion action on annual municipal association voting delegates credentials.
Right, uh they have an annual business meeting, it's a annual meeting, so this is a motion to appoint me as primary and Amy Robinson is the alternate voting delegate.
It's a motion and a second, uh any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody? Uh number twenty, other business.
We're gonna, you're gonna take up something another business or we're gonna move to it?
Yes, uh code.
Yeah.
All these properties. And just, yeah, I. Right, this is why we aren't moving forward and. Your thoughts?
Yeah, so. What you have is your updated junkyard tracker through last Thursday noon, um it's the update, the last time you saw junkyard tracker was your second meeting in June. So what I did was I kind of flushed through the document and hit anything that's been updated since um where June we, so it's really discouraging because the shade itself is what indicates that thing. Um we have new employee that's been focused on um. Testing to get through code, plumbing inspection exams, um.
Where is that progress at? Because that's been like seven or eight months in the making, hasn't it, like I. I want to speak out of turn here, but I kind of feel like I need to get hired for a job, that should have been like taking care of a Y level passing that test because you can take it as soon as you fail it again, right?
Uh how long has he been, yeah, right, how long have we had?
So. Uh current home enforcement officer, uh yes, I. That's weird, I believe, uh home enforcement officers are hired if they don't have certifications, they have twelve months under generally accepted guidelines. Uh to achieve their certifications. The current home enforcement officer has successfully passed um license following inspection certification and will wait.
Have there been attempts or how many attempts on? In seven months, I mean, I get like someone's due twelve, but.
So I'm gonna walk the fine line and acknowledge that the exam has been taken.
Right, so the lead's not been passed yet in seven months and I'm guessing that's a large amount of time that that.
Well, how long, how long will we be able to go?
Individual is starting.
With them, with them on license, it was twelve months.
General except it was twelve, right, twelve months.
Statue is twelve months.
So what do we do about that if some passed, like, I mean, kind of needs to do the job, like it's.
But he doesn't get it in twelve months, but it will happen. And it's a personnel.
What does, does, what did, would it divert back to you and you will become that person or you left?
Yes, we can do that, but that's.
If 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 statute doesn't allow somebody to be in a position for twelve months and they don't achieve certification in that position for twelve months. Then one might infer that the individual would not be in that position after twelve months if they weren't able to achieve the results of statute and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yes, no, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it's a basic expectation.
Man, it's a personal issue that we gotta talk about.
I get, I get that it's a concern and I get that it's a serious concern that the board has and then mindful of it.
Well, which is not having things getting done because it's not being passed.
And and right, and.
Or another twelve month.
He's he's still able to do a good chunk of the work though, right? Like is it just the junkyard stuff that's the issue, like, because for me, that's kind of low.
Well, no, so he's he's able to do the, he's able to do the job, right?
Compared to the other components.
He's just not following license for it, so he could, he could be out running these, you know, if that's the right word.
Okay, why isn't this getting followed up on then, maybe that's.
Okay, I need to back, I just real quick. An employee could, should, we get a back off personalities, please. I know this is a genuine policy concern of the board and so I want to answer your questions in a respectful way to individuals and talk about position and your expectations. Okay, so be mindful of that. But the question I think was, while an employee is undergoing exams, could they effectively enforce junkyards? Right, or other land use and the answer is yes, they could, you could do it when you're not undergoing exams. When I was acting home enforcement officer, I was not even trying to become a certified home enforcement officer and I usually know this is a violation.
So do, so I guess I don't understand why isn't, is this just there's personnel issues that have to be addressed to meet job expectations and responsible. For me, they can do it, but just aren't doing it.
For me, I feel like it's okay if the junkyard takes a backseat so that someone can get activated to their position and training and that sort of thing, like. Of all the things, and I don't know all the things, but of all the, of all the things they have to do, I would think driving around town and checking out. How people are in compliance with junkyards is a little bit lower rather than making sure like buildings are safe and we're up to code with.
I don't think that's happening, so is it, yeah, it's not any of the other stuff happening, is it really? To me, I just want to make sure that we're paying someone to do it.
So we're not.
I know we have time work done by code enforcement, so things are operational.
Yeah, so we're not a new back enforcing community, so we don't do building code, things like that, we don't enforce building code, we deserve it, we don't enforce it.
Yeah.
We, you know, it's plum, uh permit issuance. Plumbing, I I still get the plumbing inspectors and David Savage, I mean, he's still taking care of that for me until we get more active, except for one. Um us to be able to focus on getting certifications.
So if the board wants more information on this. Do we need to do an executive session with? With the.
With personal. So, no, that's if if the board. Uh. If the board is not pleased with progress, then that becomes a richer problem. And we can then discuss that under performance and uh later, then you're able to ask the questions that you.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, that seems, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get it and it's a difficult situation, but I'm willing to take your feedback as my personal performance feedback in order to properly address it. And then hopefully create a positive. That have to flow through me.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Yes, yes, yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't need to replace it, but I have to.
No, that's.
No, no, I get it, it's a.
It's fine, it's a joyous.
No, we're.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so what do we need?
Anything else under other business?
What's it cost, what's it cost to drag someone into court? And I know this ain't really, really the right time.
Well, that's tough.
Yeah, that's.
So. It varies, I mean, going to court necessarily costs you eighty five dollars, I think, right?
You can get in the court. You'll get in a thirteen years.
Yeah, but then it goes, then you stop the show.
Yeah, so one of the big things for me, and we talked about it at the last meeting, was you know, if you could take a picture, even if I don't do anything with it, it's like I can put it in the file, document, document, document. The attorney's gonna file the claim and it's no different than this ordinance that we touched on, you're not wrong, it's expensive, but it's no different than an attorney's filing, it's the same one, they're just changing the contents to specify to us. And then they file it, so you're probably looking, I'd say conservatively, at two thousand dollars. If you're gonna move and then you can recruit these, the commitment that the board would have to have is that. By and large, when you have a land use violation. You initiate legal action and that legal action then is the spur for compliance. And it's very difficult at that point in time when you gain compliance with the landlord to go to court and say, now we want all of our attorneys to be superior to them and everything else because they have complied and that's.
Yeah, well, real compliance is the ultimate goal here.
Really, and I just, right, and it takes legal action in a lot of situations.
Some people just don't know what need, yeah, just like the Melfi's talked about, yeah, some families, you know, they just don't know what need is. And you, you're never, I mean, I know, I wasn't learning a martial shit, but we can't, we can't trick them people, you know?
No, okay, uh.
If I could get a motion to add discussion action on cemetery equipment, do you think, John, but.
Seventeen, second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody?
A motion to approve and sign a cemetery, cemetery equipment, releasing law two sixty eight at sunset through cemetery, well.
Motion, second, second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, it's everyone? Board, anything else about the business? Uh my grandmother called me and my relatives are lost in the cemetery over here, you've moved stones. I'll be with you later, but that was the most impressive thing I got from her, old oak? No, the one on the river, old oak by her, right, tells the two people, she wanted to go see the stones and she's like, well, they're not there and I know that's where they were.
Like they're flat stones are buried.
Okay.
Like I had that just two weeks before Memorial Day, I had a woman come into the office and she says, oh, they're gone, oh, I went down with my gloves and a towel and.
Yeah.
I found them and then when I found both of them, one of them wasn't even really there, they set the stone and I ended up pulling the stone for it, but it is.
Okay. All those, right, did, what's his name, I can't.
Mark Lawson, so we have maps, we don't have necessarily the list of everybody that's been there, we have an index card file um that's not fully accurate, so we do the best we can. The committee understands that's a problem and they're looking at, you know, iPad, GPS, oh no, they're going through that.
Like the I tiles on the top?
They wanted to do something that's user friendly, so they volunteered to come in for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was completely underwater and the amount of.
Oh, you go to visit somebody and they're not there anymore.
Well, I mean, like that, I don't know what they call it, like the thing I call the death hut, I mean, like.
Yeah.
My Santa Claus that was at my yard was floating up on top of the death hut, so. I don't know what those are called.
Uh well, I take a motion to go into executive session. Second, motion second, we'll see you guys later, uh any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, it's everybody. And there won't be any other motions tonight except for.
Sure.